I think I'll just give everybody one more minute and then we'll get started to see if anybody else is gonna hop on. Hey, I know everybody's time is valuable, so we're just gonna go ahead and get started. We are convened today on Thursday, March 18th, 2021 at 12:00 PM. We are convened as the Provo City School Board and the Provo City Council. We will start with a roll call. I'm Melanie Hall, Board President. And I'm just gonna go across my screen, so it may just be in some random order. So Terry.
Terry McCabe, a school board member.
Dave Shipley. Alex.
Alex Judd, Elementary Education in Provo School District.
Cliff.
Sorry, Cliff Strachan, Council Staff.
Thank you. Nate?
Nate Bryson, School Board Member.
Gina?
Gina Hale, School Board Member.
Rebecca?
Rebecca Nielsen, School Board Vice President.
Dave Sewell?
Dave Sewell, City Council Member.
McKay?
McKay Jensen, Board Member, School District Board Member.
Let's see, Sergeant Orgill?
Yeah, Sergeant John Orgill, Provo Police Department.
Shannon Ellsworth?
Shannon Ellsworth, Provo City Council.
Jennifer?
Jennifer Partridge, School Board Member.
Dave Decker?
Dave Decker, Provo City Public Works.
Alright, Stephanie?
Stephanie Bright, Business Semester at the District.
John Magnus?
John Magnus, Paul Sanders, Provo City.
Karen?
Karen Tapahy, Council Staff.
And Kelsey?
Kelsey Hoag, Administrative Assistant for Elementary and Secondary Education.
And Bonnie?
Bonnie Tocas, Executive Assistant for the Board and the Superintendent.
Okay, am I missing? Did I get everybody? Oh, let's see, got a bunch of people waiting. Got it. Thanks. Okay, there's a few more. Just, I'm just gonna call on you and you can just say who you are and then from there, Dixon?
Dixon Holmes, Provo City Mayor.
Amber? She's still connecting. Mayor Kafusi?
It's Mayor Kafusi. You did great, Melanie.
George Handley?
George Handley.
Thank you. Jared?
Jared Dilly White, Engineer with Provo.
Travis Hoben. And Isaac Paxman. Thank you. Okay, so just to remind everyone that we'll be using the raise hand when you need to make a comment and I'll call on you. So if you have any questions about that, first, we're gonna start with a discussion about the safe walking routes. And Superintendent Alex Judd is going to discuss, start that discussion.
Thank you, President Hall. So I'm excited to join you today. I was invited by Superintendent Rotell and the Board to kinda come today and give you a little bit of an update of some things that have kind of been a process that we've gone through. So I first want to make sure that I give recognition to Jared, Rob, Dixon, Kelsey, and to John, as we've gone through this process. Last fall in September, John Orgill, Sergeant Orgill, and Officer Troy Beebe approached me and asked me about some concerns that they have regarding some of the crossing guards and the lack of ability to be able to staff them. Then in October, we met as a school community council and did our training and we were trying to get more people to support, getting those crossing guards in place so that we weren't leaving Sergeant Orgill and others in charge of trying to find people to cover those crossing guards and crosswalks where we have kids that are potentially in precarious spots. And so in that process, we ended up really engaging with the city and Rob and Jared and Dixon have kind of jumped on board to be a huge part of this process. And so we have been meeting on regular basis, starting in November. Is that correct, John? Is that when we really started going after it? That we started in November?
October.
It was October, that we really started meeting every other week. And in that time, we not only were looking at crosswalks, but also addressing concerns through the city that maybe there are places that we need to be a little bit more intentional and giving feedback to our school community councils and helping them in addressing some of the safe walking routes and concerns that we have there. So we asked all the school community councils to ensure that by the end of November, that there was, if there were any issues or concerns in their safe walking routes that the city needed to structurally address, that they would have those submitted to us through their community councils to Kelsey, who is my assistant, to make sure that we had those in place. Then from November on, we've been meeting and talking through every school specifically and looking at each of their sites and understanding what are the concerns and complexities that have been going on with the schools and why there are concerns that the different schools had with their routes and what their needs were. So then that was given to Rob and to Jared, and Jared and Rob have been doing research as well as studies, working with the police officers to make sure that we understand what the concerns were and then giving that feedback. And then in the end of January and February, Jared and Rob had compiled awesome report that was shared with the, all the school community councils, as well as the superintendent and myself, to kinda get feedback to each of the community councils, what the city could do, why they didn't make some of the decisions, and what are some steps moving forward that was financially able to be in place through the city. This is the first time in my 13 years in Provo School District that I've ever had this much collaboration/interaction with the city on processing and addressing some of the safe walking routes to schools and getting that detail of information back. And so I just kind of explained the process because it's been something that's been empowering for me as an assistant superintendent over elementary to feel like I've got such support from the police as well as the engineers and with the community councils. Now, we haven't finished. We've still met, we've been meeting with every single community council and giving them their reports, as well as sharing what the details of those reports are and being ready to answer and also address any questions or concerns. And we still have a few more that we're working through that I'm hopeful will come out in a positive way. Sergeant Orgill, you wanna jump in and share anything more on that one than Jared? Do you wanna jump in as well and give some feedback? And Dixon, please chime in when you're with information.
I think you summed it up pretty well. We've made a lot of progress and it's been very helpful getting a little bit more support from some of those communities as well. I think we're down to just one full-time crossing that's not covered. And so we're in a much better position, just grateful for the collaboration and the partnerships we formed.
At one point Sergeant Orgill shared with me that at any given day, we could have upwards of 23 crossing guards that may not be covered, which was a huge concern for me, that police officers would be expected to staff those when they might be in the middle of a real tenuous situation. And it was really becoming a burden upon them to try to figure out how to make some critical decisions when their job is to be safety for everybody. And it was really hard, so yeah. Dixon, anything you wanna say? Or Jared?
I was just gonna add that we're, now that we've set up, established this process, we're hoping it can be an annual thing, that we receive these input on, from every community council every year in the fall, and then we can review it and make changes every year. It's never a final thing. It's an ongoing process, so hopefully we've got that process established now and it will work smoothly here on out.
Yeah, really just hoping that we continue the lines of communication. Really appreciate Alex in representing this school district and having that collaboration between the city and the school district. And we recognize this also potentially impacts other portions of the neighborhood. But it also gives names and faces for those community councils to hear from both the city and the school district that we can address the needs to keep it safe.
Sounds like Terry's got a question.
So Terry, next time there's a, down in the reactions on the bottom, you can click on there and you can say raise hand. Yeah, so, but go ahead, Terry.
Um, I have, maybe Jared or Dixon can answer this question. Now that 500 West is finished, do you know when the crosswalks are gonna be painted on the road? What's the timeline on that?
As far as I know, the 500 West, 300 South crossing has been marked. And that's the one that's designated as the safe route crossing, school crossing on that road. I'm not sure about what specific crossings I can look into and get back to you on.
Before, I counted before construction, 100, 200, 300, and 400 South all had crosswalks. So I was hoping those would be put back in and then 500 South would be added because 500 South is that, there's that big apartment complex on 500 South and the kids use that. I saw a kid almost get hit by a car the other day on the way to school, so I was hoping those could be added soon.
Okay, yeah, let me look into the specifics on those crossings and I can email you. From what I remember off the top of my head, there were some changes to the safe route to school plan that were made when they redid the 500 West. And 500 West, 300 South is now designated as the primary school crossing, so that's the kind of a different stripe. It's the horizontal ladder striping that we use for school crossings in Utah. That doesn't mean that we can't use, you know, the regular just parallel lines for the other crossings and that it is a UDOT road, so they do have jurisdiction, but let me just check on those crossings for you and I can get back to you.
Not for 400 and 500 South, that's not a UDOT road, that's Provo City.
That's true. Yeah, that's true. So I can, I can get back on the striping. I thought that the striping had been in there, but I haven't gone out to check myself, so I can go look at it.
Thank you.
Any other questions that you, that we can answer? I really appreciate the city and the school board supporting us and getting this worked through. We're gonna continue to meet regularly, just not as frequently, frequently as we have been. The November 30th is the deadline for the school community councils to be like a final, if you're looking to make some structural changes to the city's infrastructure around city roads and other stuff, that would be the 30th deadline. But school community councils and/or people, schools can submit those requests to make changes to safe routes all throughout the year. We're just saying that that's our date, to be able to say as a city, you need to have time to be able to look at doing tests and study those situations to see if, one, they have the money to do it, and two, does it warrant it? So those are the key pieces that we're gonna continue to touch on. We'll periodically meet, but once we get to the November deadline, our little committee that we've been working on will meet more frequently as well.
Jennifer?
So Alex, I'm wondering what would be the best way we could share with our city councilors, especially the ones who are affected by some of the changes that will be made? I think it's important that they know in their jurisdiction, especially what schools might be getting some safe route change updates and things.
I think there's two ways to approach, two ways to approach that. I think one would be that we have this report that's come through the city to be able to share that with them so that they know what changes have been made, as well as we can work with the community councils and make sure that they look, give them direction to where their changes may have been made on their safe walking routes that way. Or reach out to me directly and we can make sure they get that information or to Rob or Jared and get that information.
So maybe we could email out that report to everybody on the council and the board?
I think so. I think that would be a huge help to everybody to be able to have that report in front of them. That's probably the easiest way.
Yeah, that email address is council@provo.org and it goes to all eight or seven councilors plus myself. If you want the mayor to add it, you'll need to do, I think it's Michelle@provo.org.
Jared, did you get that? And would you be willing to send that email? Just send that report to everybody so that they know what's been changed and what's new?
Thank you.
Any other discussion on this? I just wanted to add my two cents that I am so grateful for this. I feel like, having been a former member of a community council, sometimes I felt like we were just going in circles and I really appreciate the hard work that everybody's put into it this year. So thank you.
And that's a kudos to the team, because honestly, we have been meeting regularly since October on a consistent basis, just working through the struggles and challenges that each of us are trying to make sure that we attend to. So thanks, President Hall.
You bet. Really quick, Shannon asked, is there a prioritized capital improvements list for safe routes?
Not that I'm aware of it's a prioritized. What we've, what we've done is gone through each one of the schools and addressed their needs where they're at. And in that report, you'll see that there are some some things that we have no control over. For example, when you start talking about Geneva Road and trying to put sidewalks and/or other things there, because it's a USOE road, we don't have control over that. And so that's where Jared and Rob have been working to say, it's in their plan for the state to attend to that, but we don't have, we don't have any right to make those changes. But when it comes to bigger projects, they're aware of it and they're starting to prioritize it based on financial and/or urgency. Am I saying that? Jared, is there anything else you would add to that?
I think, I think that addresses that. The report that we are putting together, most of the improvements are, are minor in terms of striping, crosswalk signs, things like that. There are a couple of bigger capital, bigger projects in the list, like a concrete refuge island over on Center Street, a couple of things like that. But as far as the overall capital improvements budget, this isn't necessarily referencing that, if that makes sense. And I don't know if Dave Decker, if you have anything else to add about that, but.
Jared, I think you summarized it well. There are a couple of projects that will take some additional, you know, larger sums of money to resolve, but I think we've briefed the council on those and some direction needs to be given during the budget process from the council.
Okay, McKay?
Yes, just to clarify, it's a great question that Shannon asked, but I don't know if Alex is the right, I don't know if the school district prioritizes those.
We don't prioritize.
That would be a municipal, you know, a group on who does that. And, and, and so if such a list exists, I think there's actually been a couple of pieces of legislation on safe routes about, about, you know, coming up with a public list so people know. And I just wonder where that is and who holds that. Is it Mountainlands Association of Governments? Is it UDOT? Is it the city? Who does that? Who is, to Shannon's question, who is prioritizing these or, you know, ranking these?
So right now, I'm probably the best one to answer that question, but the, right now, that list has been submitted through the council for CIP, Capital Improvement Projects through the budget. And we have, we have given them the list. We have not necessarily ranked those projects, but the list is available from Public Works.
And one other thing, Rob and Jared also went through that process and really tried to base it on the need of the community councils as well, based on their urgency and what they needed. So that was the other piece that Rob and Jared and even John, to that, to that effect, also was able to kind of express some concerns regarding what projects needed to be done and what didn't. Some take a lot more money than others, and so that capital money is something that we just push back to the city to look at and see how they could prioritize it.
Thanks for that info. Just as an FYI, I don't think councilors can raise our hands in this Zoom meeting, so. I don't know how to fix that, so, okay.
We do, we do have hands and we can.
Okay, I'll watch for you guys. Do this for me if I can't see you.
The nice yellow cute kinds.
Okay, oh, I see. Okay, I see Dave Shipley and Dave Sewell can do it, so.
Some of them can, I guess.
Okay, well, if I, if you can't, just.
They got reactions first.
Yeah. So, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions for me and anybody else with the team here that we can support and help answer? And honestly too, if you have anything, just send me an email as well as Kelsey. Kelsey's been a huge support here as well, keeping track of all the information and notes with the city, so. Okay, President Hall, I think we've.
Okay, thank you.
Done our part here. If you need anything more, let us know.
All right, we appreciate it. Thank you, Alex and the team for all the hard work you guys have been doing.
Okay.
Next, we're gonna have a discussion regarding some participation jointly with city activities. So Terry, do you wanna start that?
Yeah, I just, you know, the Women's Day event just happened and I thought, well, we should have coordinated together and, you know, had some fun. And I know Bike Day's coming up, but I don't know if the city's gonna be doing that again this year. So who do we coordinate with the city with that?
I can speak to that. I didn't even try to see if my hand works, so sorry. Yeah, that would have been really fun to bring in. I should have thought of that. That's on me. I should have sent, I did send to the women that are in, that work close to me, free logins and the ability to watch to Councilmember Ellsworth and to the other council members, to their wives, and I should have thought to invite you as well. So I'll make a mental note and hopefully we aren't doing it over Zoom next year because it's much more effective in person. As far as upcoming events like the Bike Week and Bike to Work Day, I'm planning to participate in that. I can actually have my PIO. Nicole Martin could reach out. Is Chad, remind me the PIO again, if the Provo School District?
Melanie, do you know who that is?
Caleb.
Caleb. I was gonna say, but I know it's Caleb. Yeah, so, and they interact a lot, so I'll tell Nicole to reach out to Caleb and, and send out the schedule. Usually how I participate is I ride my bike down from my home and then I meet the Bike Walk Group and we go around the community and just stop in and visit with those that are being hosts. And I usually spend about the first three hours in the morning doing it and then participate in other events. But I will have Nicole Martin reach out to Caleb Price and we'll get this organized, so there's a little more collaboration. And then Terry, that's great. If you think, or you've seen anything popping up on our calendar that you are thinking, wow, we wanna participate in that, we would love to have you. One, you can put on your books right now that we're working on. A big event is going to be August 28th. We're going to fill the Rock Canyon Bowl full of family-friendly activities that are free to the public. Kind of welcome back to everybody from not only a pandemic, but the summer and back to school. And it's going to be a huge event. We're gonna have music and venues and food and, and right now, I keep saying it's going to be free. In a few more months with my committee, if they push me to charge 25 cents, I'll still push back because I really want it to be free and open up to the community and to everybody in the city. So again, I'll coordinate and we'll make sure that the school board is engaged in that and the elementary schools and high schools.
And if you guys know what 4th of July is happening, if they're just gonna do the same as last year with the big fireworks, maybe we can open up the parking lots and people can park their cars in the parking lots and watch the fireworks or.
And I can speak to that one as well. I just had my meeting last week with them. They are planning to go forward with the parade. They usually have 29 activities. As you all know, the Hope of America with the Children at the Mary Center is what usually kicks off the Freedom Festival. What they've done is they've taken those activities and, and had to throw a lot of them out. The two that we discussed that we are going forward with are Stadium of Fire. We already know who's coming and we finished the contract up. It's gonna be fantastic. Everyone will be really excited. They're gonna follow the protocols and since it's at the BYU Stadium, we will follow BYU's protocols of, you know, I don't know what they'll be by then, but if it's anything like they did for football, there will be much fewer in attendance. So, and then the parade piece, they're planning on the parade as well. I'm not sure what tweaks they're gonna make to the parade, but right now the parade and Stadium of Fire are a go.
Yeah, and we'll have whatever events are happening at the school districts. Who do we coordinate with at your office? We'll have Caleb contact them.
It's Nicole and he knows her. They've worked together. They're working on a couple activities right now. We've got our kindness week coming up with, with you and we're really entrenched in that right now. So yeah, we'll just keep pushing Caleb and Nicole together on all our events.
Yeah, I just thought, you know, things have been crappy for too long. We need to have more fun events and more happy things going on.
Well, get ready for the August 28th event. It were, every department that had to cancel their bucket lift rides from Vannergy to the Parks and Rec to the local rugby team running rugby drills with kids, we're going all out on August 28th, so.
All right, thank you, Melanie.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions or follow-up with this? All right, thank you. We'll look forward to working more with you. Next, we're gonna have a discussion regarding the proposed April 10th lift of the mask mandate. And if McKay Jensen wants to start that.
So I just wanna get on the same page with, so with the legislative session ending and especially with House Bill 294 from Representative Ray that sort of legislated that a lot of the executive orders and health orders end on April 10th. I wanted the city to be clear that, that the health order concerning masks in school actually stays in effect until July 1st. It was not affected by, it was exempted from, that order was exempted from 290, from House Bill 294. And there was another bill from Senator Windardens, 187, Senate Bill 187, that said the school district will uh, that said, "The school district will get to decide." Uh, I don't anticipate our school district deciding something different than the governor. And I did not, neither of those bills have been signed, by the way. Uh, 294 passed with a, a veto-proof majority, but the governors could still veto it and go through it. But that was negotiated with the governor's office extensively. And so I doubt that he will veto it. It's possible he will veto Senator Winchourson's bill. And, and that one might stick. But we're planning on, on masks in our schools, uh, you know, through the, through the end. Uh, the announcement came today about vaccinations for all adults, but this is not, um, children and, and, and we want to continue to do as many activities as we can. And, and, uh, we'll continue to, uh, wanna have activities and good graduations and, and, and as many, you know, school activities as we can. And so that just means keeping our case count low. And so, uh, we just wanted to let you know where that stood. And if we need some support, if, if we have, you know, greater, towards here at the end of the school, if we have greater push for protesting of, of those masks, you know, we'll still need those because, um, our, our kids understand, our, our kids would like to have a prom. Our kids would like to do things and we just need our case counts as low as possible to do as many things as possible. Do you have any questions about that?
Okay, I have a quick question. Does that, does the July 1st date also include, uh, college level?
Um, so the July 1st, uh, so it exempted public schools, uh, higher ed. Uh, so the limitations on, on numbers, I'm not clear on higher ed. Uh, so I, I'm, I'm assuming that, that some higher ed, as far as, uh, you know, public higher ed. Uh, I, I do, I think that it does affect private higher ed, so BYU will have to make its own decision. But public higher ed at M-Tech is considering, is, is going to go into July with, with masks. So, in their classrooms.
Go ahead, George.
Uh, thank you. Um, yeah, I did, I just could add that I spoke with, um, the Community Relations Committee at BYU about this, uh, a week or two ago and asked them, uh, you know, if they anticipated any change in BYU's policy, uh, after April 10th. I mean, as, as most of you are probably aware, the semester winds down, um, not long after that. So I don't think they're, they're planning to make any changes, uh, based on what they told me, uh, to their campus policies. Uh, I don't know how far into the summer that would extend, but I, I do know that they're being very cautious. And I, I, um, they, they didn't seem to indicate there was any, any rush, that they, they weren't, in other words, affected by what the, the governor was, or in the state were gonna do on this. They were gonna keep following their own policy. So I don't, I don't know exactly when they'll change their own policy, but they, they intend to keep going at least past April 10th.
All right, are there any other further questions or follow-up about this? Okay, see none, thank you. Uh, next, we're gonna have a discussion on how we as a city and school leaders can encourage a climate of civility and respect for differences. And I'm gonna turn it over to Chair Dave Sewell.
Thank you, Melanie. I'm sure many of you are concerned with the increasing polarization that we're seeing in our society, particularly in the political sphere, but I think it manifests itself in many other spheres as well, where we tend to devalue people who think differently than us and, and, uh, sometimes demonize or show a lack of respect for opinions that we, uh, or people that we don't agree with. And I, I don't have any particular outcome that I'm looking for, really any solutions, but I, given that our school board is, uh, sort of in charge of, uh, educating our youth, I just thought it might be good to take a few minutes to try to keep this topic, um, sort of top of mind. And, you know, how can we as community leaders and as school, uh, leaders show an example and, um, try to, uh, combat this phenomenon that's, that's, uh, engulfing our society? And just to start things off, uh, I just wanted to mention, uh, two positive examples, uh, that I've seen. One is on our council. Uh, I, um, really respect, uh, George Hanley as being a good example of the opposite of what I'm talking about. And, uh, he's, uh, given out some copies of a book that I found, um, really important. I just wanted to mention it in case any of you haven't heard of it. It's called Love Your Enemies: How Decent People Can Save America From the Culture of Contempt. I, uh, felt like there was a really important message on that. I know he's shared that book with a number of people and I've, I've shared a few copies with, uh, people of this as well. That's a good read. And the other one, uh, that I was gonna mention is of course on your, uh, school board. Jennifer Partridge has been working for many years on, uh, kindness initiative. And, uh, I really appreciate, uh, the work that she's been doing privately there. And I think ma, I think now there's some cooperation with, with the city and the mayor's office to some extent, although I don't, I don't really know the details of that. So I, anyway, I just wanted to call out those, uh, two examples to start with. And just any thoughts anyone might have for a few minutes on what we can do to, uh, encourage civility and respect.
Um, I was just gonna say, maybe Jennifer, I, I've been working with Jennifer on the Kindness Committee and I don't know how much everyone knows about the Kindness Week that's coming up soon in April. Maybe Jennifer, if you want to take a minute to describe what we've been working on with the Kindness Committee and the Kindness Week that's coming up, I think it would be phenomenal to have all the city council members, the mayor, all the school board members, everyone involved in that week in a certain capacity. Um, and I think that's a great way where all of us can be involved and set that example that you're looking for, Dave. Um, so Jennifer, maybe you want to take a minute and talk about that?
Yeah, thank you. Um, well, first, before I talk about Kindness Week, I just want to, um, explain that as a school district, we have been focused on kindness for, we're in our sixth year now. Um, and all of our schools have kindness clubs. Um, they're headed up by our school social workers and different schools have different levels of what they're doing with it, but they are trying to work with students and have students lead out in creating cultures of kindness, of inclusion, of looking for the lonely kids and, and being there with them. Um, and most of our schools have been doing a Kindness Week and we try to encourage them to remember that the Kindness Week is great to raise awareness, but it's not the solution because it only lasts for a week. So we want to set up things that will continue on, um, and create that culture and, and help people continue to think about that. Um, and that is exactly what we're gonna do in the city. Um, so yeah, we've, um, we formed a committee, um, of private citizens, oh, about a little over a year ago. Um, Rebecca's part of that as well and George is on that committee. Um, and we've been working to, um, take what we had been doing in the schools and take that idea to all of our citizens. Cause as Dave said, we've, we can all use that reminder, um, especially this last year, so I feel. Um, so we have social media, Provo Kindness, that we put out there, different questions, um, different quotes. We share blog posts. Uh, we have Channel 17 that helps us film videos of different people in Provo that we're highlighting, um, trying to really focus on, once you get to know a person and know their story, um, it's really hard to see them with contempt. It's, um, much easier to be understanding and empathetic. And then hopefully as you do that with these people in the videos, you can then translate that to people around you and realize we all have our thing, we all have a story, and let's all see each other with a little more compassion and understanding. Um, and so Kindness Week is April 19th through the 24th. And we are going to, um, have a kickoff video that first morning. Mayor Kufusi is gonna be a part of that. Um, we are going to bring some students into it from our high schools, um, but it is going to be for everybody. We're gonna have some examples from other people in our community of how despite differences they might have, um, how they can, they've still built friendships and overcome those differences and seeing past those differences. Um, we're going to have a kindness bingo that we're gonna encourage people to participate in on their own and in families. Uh, we'll also have a version that is more tailored towards families with, uh, like elementary age children that they can do. Um, some of it's like service-based kind of kindness, some of it's more, um, thinking about what really is kindness and how do we interact with people? And maybe reading a book or an article that helps us think about it a little bit more. Um, we're gonna have a co, community conversations over Zoom on the Thursday of that week. And we'd love for all of you guys to participate in that. And we hope this will be the first of what will become an ongoing thing that we can invite our citizens to participate in. And they'll have the chance to get in small groups over Zoom and discuss certain questions that help people relate to experiences. And again, raise awareness and understanding and, and break down some of those walls we put up between ourselves. And then we're also gonna have a closing event on that Saturday at one of our local parks where we'll have some booths and kindness things like that, so. Um, and like I said, it's just a starting point to raise awareness, bring attention to this. And then we hope to continue, um, on our social media and through upcoming opportunities to just keep the conversations going and, and, uh, help with what Dave was talking about.
Thanks, Jennifer. Um, I think it would be good if you were to email the council, like as it gets closer, to remind them of these things. I think that would be great.
Yes, we are working on getting all of our materials ready, um, like the flyers and things like that. And once we have that, we can make sure school board and city council receives those directly. And then the city's sending out emails to our citizens and the school district also has agreed to send out information through our school email channels as well.
All right, thank you. McKay?
Um, yes, um, I've, I've always appreciated this meeting and certainly, um, uh, I appreciate the, the work that, that, uh, Jennifer is doing with the Kindness Club and the mayor's support. We shouldn't miss an oppor, uh, opportunity to say thank you for the time that she and her staff invest in some, in some of those things in, in that initiative. Um, I think that does a great thing for our, our students. I think some of the specifics, you know, related directly to this group, um, I, I was just thinking of all the things that I'm looking forward to. Zoom meetings have been nice, but you know, um, when there are, it's been a while since I, I've been to a city council meeting, uh, when I didn't have something to complain about. When I went to a city council meeting to say, hey, you guys are doing a great job. Um, I think that that's gonna be something that I'm, I'm gonna personally challenge myself to do a little bit more. And, and it's been a while since we've had somebody at ours because I think that one, one thing that, that we recognize, we should recognize as elected officials is that both groups are gonna, we, we support each other. We just talked about safe routes. Safe routes are funded by the city. If we're not, if, if school board members are not supportive of the city budget process and city revenue and saying, oh, it's time and truth and taxation, you know, how can we expect safe routes to school, um, and priority? Uh, I think that, that we need to be better, uh, you know, supportive of your processes and the hard things that you ask of, of the community and the same with us. We still have, uh, a couple more, uh, schools that are, that are really aged out. We're gonna ask the community to do hard things. Um, we'll, you know, certainly we'll go through a long process with those, those schools. But I, I would hope that the default position of, for our organization is to support one another. Uh, and then that we'd get together early to resolve, uh, um, or even privately to resolve questions or we would, we would be a little more proactive instead of waiting and going, well, I don't know if the, the city has, has sold that sewer, uh, rate increase well enough. If we go and ask and say, hey, how can, you know, tell me about this, um, you know, that will affect it, what, how much we can raise, uh, in revenue or we can ask the public, but how can I be supportive of that? Because the school district needs the city, the city needs the school district, um, and that, that's for sure. I think if I'm willing to be a little bit more committed and I'm actually looking forward to coming back to the council chamber, uh, and, and I should, I should be more excited about finding things that, that I could, I can praise the council for because I need you for safe routes. I need you for our, uh, the offices in our schools. I need you just for the, the, the climate of our community. Um, and, you know, we need you. We're gonna have parking trouble at Timview. We've got a couple more schools to build. We've got, uh, things to do and we'll need you. And so if we can, I'm committed and I think we just need to be conscious of that. And I appreciate Dave Sewell, you know, adding this to the agenda.
Thank you, McKay. George?
Yeah, I, uh, I want to echo, um, these thoughts and, and, uh, thank, uh, Jennifer and everyone else, Rebecca and everyone else who's been involved with the kindness effort. And again, the mayor's office, uh, Mayor Kufusi, and I know Nicole's been very involved. That's made a big difference, uh, because it just has given the Kindness Initiative a lot more of an audience. And I think that's really fabulous. And I did just get an email from Karen, uh, to Pahi, uh, earlier today, which I haven't had a chance to respond to, but she was, uh, just sending an inquiry to brainstorm with me about how we can get the council more involved in Kindness Week. And so I will, um, I will personally commit to, um, that brainstorm and, and, uh, call on, uh, my fellow counselors to, to help out with that. I, I probably haven't been as, um, uh, good at communicating to the rest of the council all of the conversations we're having on that, uh, Kindness Initiative. So, uh, I think I can do better there, but I know Karen has actually been an important liaison as well in helping, uh, facilitate a lot of the communications. So I think, I think actually it's, it's, um, working well. I think just our personal involvement as city council members in that effort can be, uh, better and, and we hopefully can find some fun opportunities that week. I do, you know, it's, I, I've, I've actually had this worry. I mean, I care very much about this, but I know that, you know, when you, when you're a voter or when you're a, a legislator and you, you cast votes, people see certain votes as, uh, as unkind or they see them as, um, even totalitarian, shall we say? And, and so I know that for some people, uh, I'm, I'm probably, you know, already disqualified as an authority on, on civility because they perceive me as, as, as an enemy. And that's, that's a tricky thing for all of us as elected officials. But I think actually, uh, going back to what I think, I don't know if it was Jennifer or Rebecca was saying earlier, you know, it, it, you, just getting to know people makes it a lot harder to throw stones at them. And I think, um, one of the things we can do is, is to let our sort of lives and our hearts be a little more, uh, uh, available to people. Um, and, and I, uh, just echoing something that McKay was saying. And I try, uh, to stand up for the school board whenever possible. That doesn't necessarily mean that I always know what you guys are voting or always agree with everything you're voting on. But I think, uh, when people throw, throw general comments at the school board, uh, I think we can, we can do a good job of, uh, deflecting that by just saying, hey, you know, you might not agree with them, but I mean, I've said to people numerous times, I, I know the, the, the members of the school board, some of them I know very well, McKay's my neighbor. Um, and they're really good people and, you know, don't, don't, uh, make assumptions about their character on the basis of your disagreement with a certain policy. And I know that, I know that we've benefited, uh, from you in a similar way in, in, in moments, uh, prior. So I think, I think just sort of sticking up for one another's humanity, but then also letting people get to know us a little better. That's kind of one thing that I think is often missing in public life is that you, you see a public official and you think of them as a, as almost like a, you know, uh, a, a two-dimensional cutout figure of something rather than a human being that has, you know, relationships and, and family and, and, uh, and, and a heart and a soul. and family and and uh, and and a heart and a soul. So hopefully we can um, we can do, do better on that. But I, I, I actually, you know, despite some of the setbacks we've experienced, I do think we have a lot to celebrate. And that's one of the things that the kindness initiatives, I think, been our, our approach seems to be very positive. And I think highlighting really good examples in our community has been, has been a, a smart strategy to just sort of let people know that you know, and I think, I think the mayor is, is championing this idea. This is who we are, you know, as a community. We're, we're, I heard her just saying earlier today at a groundbreaking, you know, that we're compassionate people, we're a caring community. And even though we don't always live up to it, I think it's okay for us to keep celebrating that and 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 highlighting the best examples. And then hopefully that inspires people to to a higher, higher perspective.
Thank you. I agree with what um, everyone said and I echo um, especially what McKay said about, uh, you know, supporting one another. And I, I, I could do better about reaching out to council members in the mayor office when I have questions also. So I think we can reciprocate that between each other, that we can reach out to one another on a more regular basis as needed. Are there any other comments about this? I think it was a great thing for Dave Sewell to bring up and for us to talk about. Go ahead, Dave.
Well, I, if I could just say, I've found the discussion very heartwarming. I, I knew uh, I knew of some of the things that the Provo Kindness Initiative was uh, working on, but that its work is much broader than I thought. And I didn't realize how, how much you're doing at the school level in this area. And I was just really excited to learn about some of those things. Uh, and I, and I hope they benefit and uh, help, help our youth grow up with uh, more of an attitude of respect and kindness. So I just wanted to say thank you to uh, all of you for what you're doing in this area and for the examples that you set.
Thank you. Very well said. Um, anything else? Anybody else want to add to that? Well, it's been a pleasure to work with you this afternoon and we're grateful that we could do this. And I look forward to doing it again in three months. So thank you again. We'll see you uh, soon. Thank you.